Welcome, everybody, to December 30th, 2024, Town of Red Hook Town Board meeting, the last meeting of the calendar year 2024. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So I have up on the screen the agenda for tonight's meeting. I have a few announcements. The public comment period we reserve for after the public hearings. We have two public hearings, one on the draft of Local Law D1 and the other on Local Law E. And we have some other resolutions to attend to. And then we do Department Board Committee meeting reports, any correspondence, and we will then retreat to a brief attorney-client session. So with that said, let me just scroll up. One of the announcements is we received a nice letter from the state of New York telling us that we received a grant award for us to be able to do the brining project that we had applied for, for the roads. And here's the letter on the screen. And I believe the amount of money that they have awarded to us were up to the limit, should cover, from what I've read, our costs. So we should be able to get started as soon as the money comes in. We can probably put it out for bid and do the things necessary. So it was a nice thing to get. This year on Friday, there's going to be a meeting regarding ICE, the preservation of the ICE voting activity. And that's down in my clip. What? Oh, it's in Hyde Park, excuse me. Yeah. So those are the two announcements. So we might just, well, we have one more minute before the public hearing. Well, actually, according to my watch, which is synced with Steve Jobs and Apple, we can get started. So Deanna, would you be so kind as to read the public hearing notice for Local Law D1?
Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on December 30th, 2024, at 7:35 PM local time at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571, to hear all interested persons on a proposed Local Law D, number D-1, proposed of 2024, entitled Local Law D-1, Proposed: A Local Law Updating and Amending the Town Zoning Law. Such proposed Local Law D-1 proposed has been submitted to the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook. The Town Board has classified the action as a Type 1 action and declared its intent to serve as lead agency for the matter. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard at said hearing. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the Town Clerk in advance at, by email or by phone, so that arrangements can be made. Please take further notice that copies of said proposed Local Law are available for review at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook dated December 10th, 2024, Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Thank you, Deanna. This time, I'd like to make a motion that be open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. So at this time, the public hearing is open. Was there anybody here who'd like to speak about this?
I have a question. Is, when you say "speak about this," is it possible to ask questions or is it just a statement?
You can ask questions, and we may or may not be able to give you answers. But it's generally an opportunity for the public to comment on the law, of the draft law, that we may have. And if you give us questions, I'll certainly write them down. And we may be able to, if not answer them now, answer them at a later time. So if you'd like to give up?
Okay. Just leave your name, please.
You have to be a village, just in town?
Okay.
I'm a village person.
Good evening, Board. So my question is just sort of a clarification. I loosely read through some of the attachments and information about the hearing on these laws that are Ds. There's a D, there's a D1, there's a D2. So I guess my question, you know, first off is, why is there a D1 and a D2?
That I can answer.
Okay.
We've received some comments and input on D1, and we will be making suggested provisions to D1, and it has to become D2. So it's really the same law, but there will be incorporating some of these comments primarily. We received written comments from Duchess County Planning and some others, and...
I saw the planning once, they came in like on the 26th, just very recently, I think.
Yeah.
They were...
And I just got comments just about 10 minutes ago from another, from somebody else. So they, you know, they're coming in, and we want to address them. And that would be D2. So that's hopefully a satisfactory answer for you.
So D was the original introduced version. D1 was like Revision 1, and D2 will be the next version.
But you're voting on D1, too?
We're not voting on it.
You're not voting on it?
But this hearing is on D1 because that's what it was advertised for, and that was what people had the chance to review.
Okay. And you'll have another hearing on D2?
That's an item for later in the agenda.
Yes, we will be dealing with that.
Okay. So D1 is ultimately not going to end up being a final version, is what I'm hearing, because it's going to be changed into D2? Just trying to understand. Okay. All right. In that case, I think I will wait and comment on D2.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have some people from high school. Do you have any comments? Dominic? Deanna? The written, we received something just moments ago from the Item Open Space Committee.
And I've only received two comments.
You've only received two? Okay. And I'm not going to read them into the record, but we will consider them between now and January 13th, I believe, is our next meeting? So we're going to complete... Yeah, we're going to leave the public hearing open.
Do we need a motion?
We will. Is it the 14th? Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, we will, and we have a resolution for that, actually.
Okay.
So...
So procedurally, how does that work? Do we take the resolution now?
Yeah, you want to jump ahead and just do the resolution now?
Okay.
She's checking the number.
Oh, yeah, I need to get the number for that.
Could I just ask if the Board wants to leave that over to a discussion so that you can review the version and decide what the B2 version is that you want to call a hearing on?
Okay.
Because you're not just continuing the hearing, you're looking to continue the hearing on some revisions.
Yeah, I'm trying to get this thing to work here.
But Chris, how do we move on to another item with this public hearing still open?
You moved to hold the hearing open, I mean, just by motion, and then we'll call a hearing on the...
On the next...
Whatever you decide, once you have... I mean, but I think you're going to want to review those, yes?
Yes. I'm just wondering whether that... I'm trying to see what's in the packet.
There is a resolution to call a hearing on a revised version, to continue the hearing and as to the revised version, taking into account the comments that you decide to look at tonight. So if you want to take that up now, that's fine. I'm just saying I don't think you want to adopt the resolution without discussing the revisions.
All right. The revision should be in our packet, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm trying to find it here.
It's item 3.
Here it is. It's item number 3. I'm trying to be very careful on this computer. I pressed the wrong button.
It'll disconnect itself?
Yeah. Okay. So we did get... Chris?
Yes?
Perhaps if you'd be willing, you can help walk us through those changes because the copy that we have here doesn't have those...
The red one.
Oh, yours does? Oh, they're not red?
In there.
Okay, here's a few things.
It's in the digital packet, like the red line.
It's in the digital? Should I just pull up the digital?
If you have the packet open, it should just be below where it should be. I mean, it's all separate. So it's like you'll see the buffer maps, and it's below that.
This is in there?
I guess it's page 38.
Oh, 38. Apologize. Appreciate your patience. All right, here we go. So this is D2.
As proposed.
As proposed. And you can actually, this one, you can see the red line. So one of the changes I can address immediately is it was a typo.
Just a typo.
Just a typo.
So if you want to move on to the second page, are you able to display these?
Yes.
Yes, I can.
Yep.
Okay. So on that second page, there's the addition of a definition of doc. One of the comments received was to define what a doc means. This definition is taken from, just as an example, an aderatic part agency definition of what a doc is. So it's pretty generic.
Okay.
And then the next change is...
Okay, I'm on it. It's on page 44 of the packet. Okay, we have it up, we deleted. It involves deletions.
Yes, so then this deletes the time limitations in the zoning law. We'll note that those were addressed in a separate law that's being considered tonight as a matter of regulation, and so not as a matter of zoning law. So they're in the other law. And then the proposed change here in response to comments is to delete former sections regarding distance between residential zones and distance between other schools' public uses.
Chris, can I ask a question on that?
Yes.
So if, with that no longer in the local law, does that revert to the existing state regulation on those setbacks?
So that, there are regulations that would apply through the state law, and those would apply regardless of what you do under your zoning law. Your special permit provision does say that the applicant is supposed to, as a matter of condition, require a license to operate. So whatever the state allows, you know, through the regulations or through, you know, whatever variance process they may have, that would be what would be applicable to this, you know, the project.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then on the next page, there's an addition, some additional language and a removal having boat clubs.
Yes. So that was changing sewage disposal to restroom facilities. That's really just a clarification. And then to indicate that the dock and boat ramps that are being described in this section are really having to do with the boat club use, where that's the type of use that would require parking, park lights, surroundings, water supply, and so forth, and not simply a dock.
All right. Any questions? And then down to the next section, which...
Right, so there were a number of questions about this, and you may want to discuss that separately. But the change that is addressed here is wet slips, people thought that needed clarification, and so that was re-described as mooring. There were comments to the effect that this was too restrictive. So there is an additional provision here that says it's not permitted and within 1,500 feet of the shoreline speaks to the navigation law limitations. And so except for recreational vehicles, in other words, that's the only type that would be permitted, where the vessel does not exceed 40 feet, the mooring isn't more than 30 days, and the use does not include living or sleeping quarters. So that it is some permission allowing for certain short-term seasonal mooring for smaller vessels.
But not for use as a overnight dinghaw.
But not camping and that sort of thing.
And this is only associated with boat clubs, is that correct?
No, these are permissions, right. This would be boat club stocks and boat ramps allowed in those districts by special permits.
Okay.
And again, there is already a provision that says when you pump out facilities, memory field facilities are not permitted. And again, I think as you read the plenty more comments that you received to date, I think, and some of the other comments that you received today, there was some discussion about looking for broader ability to have memory facilities. So that's a matter that you'll have to discuss or consider, I should say.
Okay. Do you have any comments?
The tables are highlighted, but those are the same highlights. They weren't, the tables were not changed.
Yeah, they're the same as before, right?
Yep. Right. They're just highlighted so that it's easier to see what the changes were from the, you know, from this zoning to the original zoning, right? That's why we highlighted those.
And Chris, listen, sorry, I have a lot of questions here, but we just received hard copies, comments from the Item Open Space Committee. Like, I got mine when I walked into the room today. If we wanted to make any additional changes in response to those comments, would that need to happen like right now in order for it to be incorporated in D2? And if we wanted to do it later, would that have to be D3? But procedurally, how does that proceed?
Right, I mean, if you're going to make a substantive change to the law, you're going to want to, you know, have a hearing on that change.
I think we should probably, since we just got these, I mean, literally, it was five minutes before the meeting, probably have a chance to digest them a little bit before we decide whether we want to make changes or not. That would be my recommendation. Anybody else?
Makes sense.
Okay. So that is D2. And at this time... Nope. This time, I would like to just jump ahead to item number... I wish I could get this thing to go... To item number 3. To, what resolution, what number is that, Deanna?
128.
128?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 128 to establish the continued public hearing regarding adoption of Local Law D2. I'm going to make that motion, so I have a second.
Okay.
I think Julie got it first. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, terrific. And that'll be on the 14th.
And I'm certain that's part of the motion?
Yep. It should be in the... You got to fill it in, right?
Yes, because it's to be set by you.
Okay, 7:35 in the evening. Let's see if I still write 24. Takes me a little while, but I'll get used to the next year. Okay. So with that addressed, five minutes behind schedule, but... Deanna, could you be so kind as to read the public hearing notice for Local Law E?
E1.
E1, I'm sorry.
Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on December 30th at 7:45 PM local time at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, to hear all interested persons on a proposed Local Law Number E, proposed of 2024, entitled Local Law Number E-1, proposed of 2024, a local law amending the Town Code, Chapter 53, entitled Cannabis, adding a new Article 2, entitled Regulation of Retail Dispensaries, and adding a new Article 3, entitled Regulation of Smoking and Vaping, has been submitted to the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, the proposed Local Law. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard at said hearing. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. Please take further notice that copies of said proposed Local Law are available for review at the Town Hall. And by order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook dated December 10th, 2024, Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Thank you, Deanna. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion that be open the public hearing for Local Law E1. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So at this time, the public hearing is open. Is anybody here who'd like to speak to this draft law? Deanna, did we receive any written comments?
No.
Going once, going twice, final and last call. All right, so there's no comments. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing for Local Law E1. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Let's see. We can come back to that. Just take care of a few other items on the list. The next item on our agenda involves a resolution to honor one of our town residents to achieve the rank of Eagle Scout. This is a traditional thing we do here in Red Hook. And it involves Jacob McGee, this is a copy of the resolution. Anybody have any questions?
Just congratulations.
Yeah, okay. So at this time...
Just to say that, you know, these require a project.
Yes.
And so as stated here, his project was to build two permanent sun shelters for the Red Hook Recreation Pool. That's a nice addition.
It's a very nice. So would somebody on the Board like to make a motion that we adopt this resolution?
So would.
Thank you, Christine. Is there a second?
Second.
Julia, beat you, Jay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we've adopted that. Does that get a resolution number, Deanna?
I can, yeah, we can do 129.
Yeah, it makes sense. The next item on the agenda, take care of that, and then we can come back to E1, is, involves the Plus 1 ADU program, which is a state-sponsored program for counties to provide funding from the State Department of, I think, housing and community renewal to address accessory dwelling units. Currently, Orange County, Old Street County, and Columbia County participate in this program. And this is a resolution for us to support Duchess County joining that. And if it does get passed and Duchess County becomes a part, there will be funding available, grant funding available for communities that are looking to find ways to address accessory dwelling units in their community. And since we are doing our updated comp plan, which is out for bid, right? The timing is perfect. So at this time, I would like to make a motion. Or would you like to make some motion?
I don't know, I've taken my last one.
I would like to make this motion, but I also know that there's a stray N in the middle of the warehouses that I would like to just like remove that.
I will, yeah.
Between the two warehouses.
After the second warehouse.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, you know, we've talked about this for a little bit at housing committee meetings. As a pro-housing community, I think this is a great opportunity to tap into funding for additional housing within our community. So I'd be happy to move resolution...
130.
I will say.
Thank you, Julia. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So it's unanimous. Thank you all. Nice if the county joins and we're able to help fund that. Okay, so now I'm going to come back to Local Law. We covered the D2 number 3, so we'll go to number 4 on our agenda, which is resolution for... Is that it? And I have D2. It's a little cumbersome navigating this. Almost there. Apologize. Appreciate your patience. I'm going to make sure we're all on the same page here. Here we go. So at this time, we've closed the public hearing. I don't see any comments. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution will be number 131 to enact Local Law E1 regarding vaping and smoking in town properties. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. All in favor?
Wait, just wanted to note that this is where, I believe, Chris Shaw, you mentioned that the hours of operation are shown in here, that were taken out of the draft D2.
They were moved into, let's see if they're on here.
In Article 2.
That's the resolution. Keep going. This is it.
Right there, the very last one, 5311.
There it is. It's right here. So it was removed from the zoning law and put into this law.
It was in this law, but yes, it is in this law.
But it was amended.
It was amended to change it from...
Yes, it was also amended, yes.
6:00 PM to 7:00 PM. I see.
Right, correct.
Should we go through the law and the changes, or...
I mean, it was up for review. I mean, so, but just because Chris mentioned that specifically, I just wanted to say, show that that's where it stood up.
Anybody that would like to go through it, or... Okay. So Christine was the second.
Yep.
I'm just the motion, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So Local Law E has passed. And that was on resolution number 131, correct?
Yes.
All right. That becomes Local Law over. Okay, and now...
Can we do a general public comment?
Oh, yeah, I'm going to do that now. I said, thank you for reminding me. So at all of our meetings, we have a general comment period of fifteen minutes, which usually we do early, but because we had two public hearings, we saved to the end. So if there's anybody here who'd like to speak about any matter, please feel free to get up. Want to get our high school student? No? Dominic? No? Okay.
No, I'm actually totally confused with the different variations and stuff, so I'm just going to sit out until the next public hearing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so now, at this point, we go to the, the second meeting of the month is when we go through the committees and department reports. And the first couple up are the lease for October and November, came in separately. Since I'm the liaison to the police department, I'll go through them briefly. In the month of October, the Red Hook Police Department responded to one hundred and sixty-five calls or incidents. They issued twenty-five traffic summonses, no parking tickets, and they made two arrests. The report is delineated by subject matter on these, on various calls, so whether they're on mobile accidents, property burglar alarms, fire alarms, animal complaints, which include, you know, someone being, hitting a deer on the road, that kind of thing. Burglaries, civil matters. So they do it in alphabetical order, and they're there for people to read. They do respond to a lot of medical emergencies, mental health crisis, and they do a whole bunch of wellness checks. The school, just as I'll reiterate, as I always do, it always looks like there's a lot of calls. That's because there's a school resource officer, and this is how they, they log them going there. So it looks like there's a lot of activity at the school, there is not. And as you'll see, and I'm talking about the wellness checks, there were a lot in October. And that is when, say, someone can't get in touch with a loved one, and they call the police, and the police pay a visit to that address to see if that person is okay. And so it was a busy month for that in October. And then, as sometimes happens here, we get two months at a time. So for November, there were, again, one hundred and forty-six calls and incidents. They issued twenty-five tickets, no parking tickets, and made one arrest. And again, these are the various categories, which are here for anybody to peruse. Kind of get into them. And so that's the police. Would our liaison to the rec department, please?
It's not that thick. Yeah, so basically, what we have here is the annual reports for each separate property that the direct commission takes care of outside of the general parks. So we have one for Saint Margaret's Home. We have another for the dog park. We're now maintaining the dog park. Town hall groundskeeping report. One more. Okay, now that's four or four. I think I missed one. But at any rate, so they're very detailed reports indicating how many hours was worked in total on the various properties, who did the time, how much gasoline was used, which equipment was used, diesel repairs, very, very detailed. So we have a very good picture of how much the time is being put on each property. Actually, can you scroll, scroll back up for a minute, because I did want to mention that. That's a copy of the note that was found in the suggestion box at the dog park. And someone just thanking our team for the really great work, significant increases in the condition of the park and upkeep of the park. And once again, you know, our team does a really great job. They go above and beyond. Each member has, you know, is assigned to a line, shall we say. Somebody, you know, somebody could be a red church cemetery person, somebody else could be the dog park person, somebody else could be allocated to Saint Margaret's. But they all work together and, you know, pitch in at whatever property is necessary, but all of that time is tracked for each person when they're on whichever property. So very
Put a red church just as
Yeah, so that was the one, I missed red church. And so as we have said a number of times over the past couple of years, the duties of this department have expanded greatly over the past several years with the addition of Red Park, Red Park West, and the Dog Park, and Red Church Cemetery, and, you know, Saint Margaret's, and then Cuckingham West. So I just really cannot say enough about the amount of work and the quality of the work that this team is getting done for all of us in the town.
You're here.
Thank you, Christine. Second, Matt. Next report is the water board meeting, which is different than the water department. The water board consists of individuals who volunteer to be on the board, sort of oversees our water department. And they meet, I don't know, quarterly or so. And this was the minutes of the meeting of October twenty, I mean, of August twenty-eighth. I was not able to attend that meeting, but generally, what's discussed are more high-level conversations about issues that are facing the water department. And in this case, and there was another meeting recently for which the minutes aren't here, but I attended just the November meeting, or December meeting, excuse me. But the issue of the lead service lines is something people should know about. We have four hundred and ninety-eight homes that we provide water to. And the federal government and the state of New York mandated that an inventory be taken, or census, if you will, of all service lines, which is the pipe that brings the water to the home, to make sure there's not lead. And so we're in the process of trying to determine and make sure that none of the homes that are serviced by our water department have a lead line, in which case it would have to be replaced. We know that over half of them don't, just because they were built at a time after lead was ever being used. There's, there's a small window of homes, and we've sent letters with our water bills. We've contacted customers, and they have responded by providing us information that we've asked for to help us identify whether, you know, it's a copper line or a lead line. We have not identified any lead, and we are confident that there aren't any, but we have to do this, and it has to be reported to the EPA through the state of New York. This is the water department meeting, which they meet monthly, and I do attend these. And these are really sort of the weeds meetings about how are our wells working? How's, what's the rate of the water, the pump rate? Testing of the water for, you know, chloroform and other bad things. And then our schedule for the various types of tests that are required of our water department, like P F, the P F O As and P F S, as well as E K O I and other things. And these reports are, they're monthly, and they report on how that, how those reports are being reported back. And then there's always a few things about maybe complaints we're getting from a customer. Maybe they're having cloudy water or dirty water and issues that we go out and determine what the cause of that is. One item that I did not address, and I meant to, is that Hank Van Parleys, who's the chair of our water
The chair.
He had initially, of the water commission, had originally announced his retirement at the end of this year. He had a change of heart and decided to
Was he going to stay?
He's going to stay for a little while longer to give us time to have a search committee to find a suitable replacement.
Yeah, again, another fantastic volunteer, and Hank has been doing this
For a long time.
Since, gotta be close to thirty years.
Thirty years.
I mean, because when I was on the planning board, he was doing it. So the knowledge that he has about our water systems and the upkeep that needs to happen to them and the changes in regulations that come through is, you know, it's just, he has a tremendous amount of knowledge. And we, you know, a great loss to us when he does finally, when we let, finally let him retire, but I'm happy to hear that he's staying on for a little bit longer.
We're trying, we're trying to pick his brain for the institutional knowledge he has on, right? I mean, there are issues involving mapping, like where the lines, the pipes actually are under the roads. And in various, because the town, the developed, the residential areas were developed at different times.
By different developers.
By different developers, and so it's important to stay on top of that and issues, as well as the day-to-day operation of the, of the department. So that was that. Why did I get all of these?
The departments were just doing the best work.
Goodness gracious. I thought I was going to get a pass on this one, but it didn't come until, and they updated it at the very last minute, because I'm the lazy into the building department. So they just got it in like about four thirty this afternoon.
Well, and this is it, so.
It's always, it's always the thickest.
And very, again, great record keeping.
Yeah.
We know everything that's going on with town here, or we look up for each of these totals that are here.
Gives you an idea of every permit that's been issued, where, who, who asked for it, what it's for, all the inspections that are done for the ongoing or finished construction, the number of certificates of completion or occupancy that are issued. The violations number, I, unfortunately, when I got this at four twelve this afternoon, they were gone. I, I want to get some information about, about that number. The other issue is there's what looks like a one violation hyphen thirty-nine, and I'm not sure
I think it's complaints slash violations.
Yeah. Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So we don't know how many
That was handwritten there. Yeah, I wanted to, yeah.
Violations versus complaints.
Me, yeah, I just, you know, I know that
It might be in here, but we just haven't had a chance to really go through it.
I don't think it is. Last month, I do know that there were some violations involving a situation, but it certainly didn't amount to thirty-nine, and I'm not sure whether that's
About the complaints?
You have
Looks like fifteen complaints.
Does it give it the same address?
Oh, this is a summary. Is it four miscellaneous, one no building permit, five property maintenance, and five zoning?
Okay, so that says the subject matter of the complaints, but obviously, there's the balance of the violations. They also, they're monthly, is the amount of revenue that has been generated for the town by application of different building permits, as well as completions of work. I'll be interested to see, they do a year-end report, which we'll be getting for next month, and sums up the entire year, which is always
Some of that data's here.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, so there's a summary report right at the end, I think. So we have
It's always the longest.
Yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of numbers here. I guess it's page one seventy-nine of the P D X, where it starts, the summary report.
Just try this. One seventy-nine?
That's where I found the miscellaneous, I mean, the complaints in the summary report.
Because it came in so late, I didn't really get a chance to, oh, here's the summary of the violations. Okay. People didn't have, so take a bit of occupancy, but they didn't say where. Okay.
Yeah, I think we used charts, the ones that show the amount of work that happens.
Okay.
So another very busy department.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Four hundred and thirty-nine permits, you know.
And actually
Nine hundred and forty-five inspections.
This is a slightly sluggish month, actually, by, by comparison. It's probably over in the winter. But yeah, so they do have a, they did give nine hundred and twenty-seven fire inspections. So this information's all out here in the public, and this is a helpful pie chart, gives you an idea of the breakdown in terms of our revenue. So we generated a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars in permit just for residents. Let's see. And then the last item is, I think that's it for
Correspondence from
Yes, it's correspondence from the New York State Department of State regarding the Hudson River National Estu-
Estuarian.
It's Estuarian Research Reserve.
We saw this earlier, they
Yeah.
They were putting in this permit. We had to comment on it also, so this is another.
So it's just a, so that's it for the correspondence, other than, well, we did get this from the
That's for the
But that was for
D two.
D two.
Or D one, I guess.
So that concludes our agenda items. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we go into a brief attorney-client session to discuss a matter of litigation. And I do not believe, because it's an update, we're not going to be coming back out to take any action. So this will conclude the meeting. Now, I, we have a few students here who I'm assuming need a signature on something.
Yes, sir.
What high school are you guys from?
Pilgrim's.
Oh, so the same Pilgrim's.
Same students, same as last time.
Same as last time. I thought I recognized.
You keep it busy over the break, aren't you guys on break?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. All of our work is due the day we come back.
Which is when?
January third. Yeah.
Oh, so it's a short break. We're shorter than you'd like, right?
Yeah, we do. A buffer day after New Year's.
Uh, yeah.
We should make a short meeting this time.
Yeah.
I'm going to make the motion that we go into attorney, hold on about a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, before we go back.